Terrific. Well, welcome, welcome everybody to the hearing of the Procedure Committee inquiry into the use of Ausland interpretation for the broadcasting of Legislative Council proceedings. Indeed, this is a groundbreaking hearing and I must say the members of the Procedure Committee here today are a subcommittee of the Procedure Committee appointed for this hearing and we're very excited to to meet you today and indeed to try out Ausland and how we integrate things here into the work of the Legislative Council. So thank you so much for being here with us. It's certainly, as I said, a groundbreaking committee hearing and I think hopefully a sign of things to come in many ways. But we won't prejudge or preempt any of those matters. We're here to listen to you today and to understand how we might proceed down this pathway. The inquiry is examining the merits of varying the standing orders to introduce live Ausland interpretation of the broadcast of all or part of the Legislative Council proceedings and to consider whether there are other ways the Legislative Council can take action to ensure that it is acting in accordance with the United Nations Convention on the Rights of Persons with Disabilities, signed by Australia in 2007. I acknowledge the Gadigal people of the Oranation, the traditional custodians of the lands on which we are meeting today. I pay my respects to elders past and present and celebrate the diversity of Aboriginal peoples and their ongoing cultures and connections to the lands and waters of New South Wales. I also acknowledge and pay my respects to any Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people joining us today or indeed online. Today we'll be hearing from a number of stakeholders including members of the deaf community, deaf peak body groups and academics as well as representatives from other parliamentary jurisdictions. While we may have many witnesses with us in person, some will be appearing via video conference today. And I wish to thank everybody for making the time to give evidence to this important inquiry. Before we commence, I would like to make some brief comments about the procedures for today's hearing. The committee secretariat has arranged for Ausland interpreters to be available throughout the hearing to ensure full and active participation of all witnesses and committee members. I note that a number of witnesses will also be appearing with their own interpreter. And I just wanted to check with our our interpreters that I'm not moving too quickly. All good? Excellent. Today's hearing is being broadcast live via the Parliament's website. The broadcast will include Ausland interpretation. A transcript of today's hearing will be placed on the committee's website when it becomes available. In accordance with the broadcasting guidelines, media representatives are reminded that they must take responsibility for what they publish about the committee's proceedings. While parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses giving evidence today, it does not apply to what witnesses say outside of their evidence at the hearing. I therefore urge witnesses to be careful about comments you may make to the media or to others after you complete your evidence today. Committee hearings are not intended to provide a forum for people to make adverse reflections about others under the protection of parliamentary privilege. In that regard, it is important that witnesses focus on the issues raised by the inquiry's term of reference and avoid naming individuals unnecessarily. All witnesses have a right to procedural fairness according to the procedural fairness resolution adopted by the House in 2018. If witnesses are unable to answer a question today and want more time to respond, they can take a question on notice. And indeed, written answers to questions taken on notice are to be provided in 21 days. If witnesses wish to hand up documents, they should do so through the committee staff. In terms of how the hearing will function today, I remind English-speaking committee members, witnesses and Ausland English interpreters to speak into the microphone. Given the reliance on interpreters for today's hearing, I also ask committee members and English-speaking witnesses to ensure that due consideration is given to the time needed for the translators to perform their translating task. Additionally, we have a number of witnesses in person and via video conference. It may be helpful to identify who questions are directed to and who is speaking. For those who are hard of hearing and who are present in the room today, please note that the room is fitted with induction loops compatible with hearing aid systems that have telecoil receivers. Finally, could everyone please turn off their mobile phones or turn them to silent for the duration of the hearing? Excellent. I now welcome our interpreters. Bettina Gerdler, if you could, thanks Bettina, Kiri Dangerfield, who's signing, and Kate Hinton. Welcome to you all. And if you could, please state your full name and position title and swear the oath or affirmation for interpreters.
My name is Bettina Gerdler and I'm swearing the affirmation. I solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that I will well and truly interpret the evidence that will be given and do all other matters and things that are required of me in this hearing to the best of my ability.
My name is Kate Hinton. I am an Ausland interpreter. I swear by Almighty God that I will well and truly interpret the evidence that will be given and do all other matters and things that are required of me in this hearing to the best of my ability.
My name is Kiri Dangerfield, Ausland interpreter. I solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that I will well and truly interpret the evidence that will be given and do all other matters and things that are required of me in this hearing to the best of my ability.
Thank you very much. Now, welcome to our first panel of witnesses. It's great to see you here for this historic committee hearing. And I'd like to welcome Dr. Jessica Kirkness, Lorraine Mullie and Darlene Thornton. And I should state at the start that I understand, Darlene, that you are Nathan's mum. And Nathan is with us, is he with us now or he's just disappeared? There he is, there he is, ladies and gentlemen, Nathan here on my right. So that's very special as well. So thank you all for coming. If I could invite Dr. Kirkness to please state your name and swear either an oath or affirmation.
Sure. Dr. Jessica Kirkness, and I'll be reading the affirmation. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you, Dr. Kirkness. I now invite Lorraine Mullie and Darlene Thornton to please, through the interpreter, state their name and either swear an oath or an affirmation. Perhaps we could start with you, Lorraine.
My name is Lorraine Mullie. Thank you for having me here today. And I swear by Almighty God that I will... I will tell the truth and... Sorry. I will tell the truth in all that I say.
Terrific. Thank you. Darlene?
Hi, my name is Darlene Thornton. I solemnly swear to tell the truth in the evidence that I provide today, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Now, would you like, would anyone like to start by making a short statement? And please keep it short. We'll have some questions for you as well.
I'm happy to go first. I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to speak today. And I think it's a really important and timely conversation to be having, especially after COVID, when we've had so much public interest and support for full access to Ausland in broadcasting on television and for safety information. And I think this is a really natural and important continuation of that movement towards providing access for people, all people, but especially deaf people who are routinely excluded from a lot of political conversations. So thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to make a short opening statement? Please.
Yes, please. I'm really grateful for this event today, especially given the recent history that we've had. New South Wales has not truly been accessible for people with disabilities. And I think that this is a good opportunity to start making steps towards improvements in that space, particularly for our deaf community whose language prohibits them from equally being involved in the happenings and discussions of this parliament. Having access to information is a basic human right. So I think that this is a great acknowledgement of the importance of that in proceedings and acknowledge that Ausland interpreters being provided in these contexts allows that to happen.
Thank you. And Lorraine, is there anything you wish to say or you're happy to?
Yes, I'd like to say I too am very grateful to be invited here today. I think that it is important. And I come as a representative of Deaf Seniors Group. This is a group that lobby for equality for deaf people over 65 and recognition of our language, culture and diversity. There are many different languages and ways which people communicate and access is derived from that, from that language provision. It's a wide community. And I think that it doesn't matter whether citizens are hearing or deaf, their access to these things is paramount. I've brought this with me today, which is a document that recognizes the background of who we are. And this is the group that I'm here to represent today. Thank you.
Great. Well, we'll consider that document tabled and submitted to the committee. And thank you very much for those opening statements. I might just ask a question to start proceedings, if I could, and open to who might like to take that. And if you'd like to all address it, that's quite fine. So I just wanted to ask you about how accessible closed captions are for you and how adequate do you think that they might be and how we might improve that, indeed, if there are shortfalls here in terms of proceedings of the New South Wales Parliament?
Yes, thank you. I'd just like to say, having access to all in parliament is very important. We must remember the context of people coming from diverse backgrounds. And unfortunately, many people are not able to access technology when proceedings are When proceedings are broadcast, there can be internet connection issues. And it also inhibits people's ability to see the clarity of the interpretation and the captions as well. There are often technical issues with those.
Darlene?
I'd like to say that yes, captions are good enough in some cases. But for many people, they're not equal to receiving information in spoken English. Many people are not able to read and understand those captions. And like Lorraine said, there's a balance that needs to be considered with some people being able to use captions, but not all people being able to readily understand those captions. As well as being aware of the quality of the captions themselves, they need to be very closely monitored to make sure that they are proper reflection.
Indeed, we're certainly conscious that sometimes the captions aren't precise enough. And it's something we're working on a lot in the parliament to ensure we improve our captioning service. So these comments are very useful. And Jessica?
I would just add that for many deaf people, Auslan is their first language and their preferred language. So captions in English are a useful start, but they're not enough to fully include the nuances of important political information. So in order to give full access, it's much better to have visual spatial communication through Auslan so that those, the particularities of the decisions that are being made are reflected fully. And I think you've raised the issue of malfunctions with captions and that does happen quite a lot. I had deaf grandparents who relied upon Auslan for communication and they often missed important social, cultural, political information as a result of poor captioning.
Okay, thank you. Ms Boy?
Thank you very much, Chair. Thank you so much for being here and giving us the benefit of your insights. This is an inquiry that we're very excited to hold and I'm very proud to be part of something so historic in this place. Could you explain, and perhaps I'll start first with you Darlene, if why is it that the written word is not equivalent to Auslan in terms of the richness of the communication? If you could explain to us, you know, around tone and, yeah.
Okay, thank you. We need to understand that English and Auslan are two completely different languages with their own lexicon and grammar. English is written and spoken. Auslan is a visual spatial language. So all the information is contained in that visual space. There's no written form of the language and that means it's more complicated for an Auslan user to comprehend spoke, I mean, written English, especially Auslan users who have grown up with Auslan as their first language. So it's a different way of the brain comprehending the language in the first instance. And then you also notice, as in the case of the interpreters today, there's a time lag between the Auslan, I mean, the English that's spoken and the Auslan that's signed. You can't directly convey the emotion through the written form of English. It's not easy to ascertain as simply as it is in the visual spatial field. And the tone of voice is what is missing and that is what is expressed in the visual form of Auslan.
Thank you. Could you also explain to the committee the, the way that Auslan goes far beyond the use of hands? And the way that the entire face and body is used to convey communication in a richer format?
Yes, certainly. Thank you. It's really like a four D situation, a four D language. It involves the facial expression, the mouth, the, the movement in the shoulders and the upper body pointing in different directions. It's a directional language. When you talk to a person, you don't say their name. And when you refer to people, you use space, you set up the space to then point at people. So you need to conceptually know where the different people are you're referring to in that space of signing. So that's another element to the difference.
Thank you. And just one more question before I pass back to my colleagues. What is the difference then between having an interpreter in the room, in the space with you versus being an interpreter on a screen being broadcast from a different room?
It's a huge difference. I'm watching now this screen. It's not easy because of the time lag. So I actually prefer to watch the interpreter sitting over here in the room. It's easier to follow. It's more synchronous with the, the question, the English being spoken. I feel, as we all do, that it's more involved, more connected to the communication. It does feel more of a disconnect between watching what's happening on screen compared to what's happening when the interpreter is right there in person and you can see their body language in three D. It's very important for deaf people to really feel like they're part of what's happening in that space and not at a distance from it. You pick up the underlying communication and subtext as well just by being in the same space.
Could I please add to that? It's very important when interpreters from different states, when we're looking at them, sometimes I prefer to be able to, apologies, choose the interpreter that I'm familiar with. Captions at times have language that isn't known to me, but when I do look at an interpreter, I'm able to relax and receive that information in a language that's meaningful for me. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. And Honorable Wes Fang?
Thank you very much for coming in today and sharing your views. I'm curious to know how the Auslan language itself differs from worldwide languages that are used by deaf people. We know that with captioning, the algorithms are improving all the time and the technology will be such hopefully soon that not only can we interpret the spoken English word into text via technology, but inevitably that will then lead to translation into other languages. With Auslan, I understand it's very specific to what we do in this country. Is, is there a opportunity to use it to communicate to a wider audience? Or is it very, going to be very specific to what we do here in Australia?
Okay. In each country, there are their own spoken and signed languages. There are similarities between Auslan and New Zealand sign language and British sign language. But in terms of having a worldwide sign language, that's an impossibility. There are too many barriers to that. In Australia, we do have Auslan used nationwide. But we do have a couple of dialects, specifically the northern and southern dialects. In recent times, they've become, there's a more of a blurred line between the two with more communication across the country. We use Auslan. In Australia, yes, that is the case because it is our language. Other people around the world wouldn't really necessarily be using Auslan. They'd have their own signed languages. But of course, English is used all around the world in various places. But there's no international spoken language. It's the same situation as there being no international signed language. So yes, Auslan is Australia-specific.
So in that instance, when somebody comes to Australia who is, has hearing difficulties or is deaf, it's still important then to ensure that captioning is provided and potentially translated in order for them to understand our democracy and our democratic process until they become comfortable with the Auslan language, which I imagine they would learn after arrival.
It really depends on what language the deaf person already has. If they already know English, there's going to be no problem with them accessing captions. But if they don't have any English, then, then there are issues they would need to have that access to language. It'd be common for them to come to Australia without that language in the first place. So they wouldn't know Auslan and they'd need to have interpreters who are familiar with unpacking Auslan into a more accessible form of sign language for them until they became fluent in Auslan.
Yes, also previously I've worked as a deaf relay interpreter myself. And these are professionals who will come into a situation. They may meet somebody who's recently moved to the, the country and they will assess this deaf person's language that they have. And then me as a deaf interpreter would adjust my language to suit their needs. Over time of providing support to these people via deaf organisations, deaf relay interpreters, they may eventually acquire Auslan language themselves.
Thank you. I will mark Bardeke.
Thank you, President, and thank you for all attending on what is a very, very important subject matter for us to be able to come to an informed conclusion about how we improve the parliament and access to. So thank you. I was just interested with if Auslan seems to be the, in the submissions I read, Auslan seems to be the overarching encompassing preference for the deaf community. How embedded is it in that community from say, when someone is, has that condition? Is it something that, that kids are taught at a very early age and is it throughout the whole community? Or is, or is it still a very limited language? I'm just interested to know the breadth of Auslan in the deaf community in terms of people's understanding of it and education of it.
Would you like to answer that? And then we'll take turns.
Could you repeat the question? Sorry.
So it's, so it's, it's really just a question about how, how much penetration Auslan has in the deaf community in terms of people's knowledge and understanding of it. Is it something that, that kids are taught at from a very young age and they grow up with it if, if they're deaf? Or is it some people are relying on the written language, others are relying on Auslan? Do we have any idea of percentage of penetration, I guess, into the community of Auslan?
Right. I think there's about thirty thousand users of Auslan in Australia. I think that's the most recent estimation I've read. And I think it's difficult to assess some of these things because while Auslan is a national deaf language, and I'm putting that in inverted commas because it's not recognised legally as such, it is the language of deaf people in Australia and it is the language that they would most commonly be using if they identify as deaf. So I think that it's important to make the distinction between people who are hard of hearing or who consider themselves to be hearing impaired, for example, and might not belong to the deaf community. And the deaf community see themselves as a linguistic and cultural minority. So Auslan is particularly important for them. And, you know, this is a group of people who socialise regularly, have their own cultural, social organisations, political organisations. And Auslan would be the language that this particular group of people would use and rely upon. So there are issues with hard of hearing children not getting access to language, which is a separate conversation perhaps, but there are lots of children that end up language deprived because they're not given adequate access to sign language. So really, we actually need a cultural push towards seeing Auslan in all areas of public life so that we don't miss those children. Cochlear implants are a solution in part, but they are not a full solution. As soon as you take them off, there are still barriers to communication. And so providing bilingual education or bilingual access to information is really, really important.
I'd like to also offer an additional two points. First being that English is not yet the legal language of Australia. It has not yet been officially defined as such. We also have two different points of views. Darlene is, and Darlene and myself, in different ages. We have different families that we've come from. Myself from a hearing family who didn't sign at all. And I was not allowed to try to sign as a child. I had to focus on attempting to lip read and to speak myself. With my own children, when they were, when they were up to eleven and twelve, we didn't yet have captions. Once they got to the teenage years, once I reached the teenage years, then it was wonderful to start seeing more access to interpreters and that natural progression. And from then I was absorbed into the deaf community where I found support and a hundred percent belonging. And I've grown from there. Now children are able to grow up in those environments, but it is a very different scenario from when we grew up to children today.
I'm one of the only three percent of deaf Australians who come from a deaf family. Third generation deaf Australian I am. So we've always used Auslan at home as our first language. When I went to school, it was an oral programme however, but at home it was full Auslan. So that's only three percent of the deaf population in Australia. So the majority wouldn't have Auslan as their native language in the home. So it's quite rare to be one of those cohort. Up till now, mostly the education system hasn't focused on Auslan language acquisition. There's been an English language policy. It hasn't been open to Auslan use in preschool and throughout schooling. As Lorraine has just mentioned, she didn't have access to it. In terms of deaf children automatically having sign language as a result of being deaf, that's not the case. Often, many come to Auslan later in their childhood or adolescence or even older. Most of it is language deprivation is the situation for most deaf. In either language, there's delays in accessing both English and Auslan for many members of the community. And that's why expecting deaf people to rely on English captions is an impossibility. There isn't the equality of language access to, for the deaf people in Australia. And that's why there's such advocacy for the use of interpreters. Cochlear implants, as you mentioned, are not a cure for deaf people as well. They are a tool and they're a useful tool and they can provide support in certain cases. But that is all they are. I hope that answers your question.
No, thank you. That's very, very helpful and that's exactly what I was after because this is a key point, I think, isn't it? So if we have such a low level of penetration of that language into the deaf community and it is such a valuable tool, which is I think what the evidence is stating, then it becomes incumbent on institutions like this one to promote and foster it because then it becomes systematic in that community. So the community gets more access by virtue of government leading the way is what we're saying. So this is, this is one of the key things. So this is this is one of the key things, I think, coming through from the evidence. Is that is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, definitely.
And can I ask you, um in terms of cutting-edge jurisdictions, is there anyone that we should be holding up as the ideal model to aim for that you're aware of?
Do you mean within Australia or globally?
Uh well, globally, actually, anywhere.
New Zealand, America.
Yeah.
Finland as well. Finland is very good.
So the parliaments in those particular countries? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. All right. And just one more, and it's along the same lines, I guess. Um in terms of the discussion around the captioning, I'm assuming that part of the problem is is that when people are trying to read the captions, they can't concentrate on the aesthetics, the face, the expressions. So this is why, I'm assuming this is why one of the main reasons why you can't rely on captioning alone. Would that be a fair statement?
Yes. A lot of the time, you need to really decode what the captions mean at the same time as trying to understand what the English is. And then you miss out on the natural expressions that are happening on screen and in the background. So here we've got captioning and interpreters on this screen. That's fine. I can choose myself which one I look at. I prefer when there's an interpreter to have them near the speaker. That's why they're they're in the same frame of vision. So you see the expression on the speaker's face at the same time as seeing the interpretation. When they're separated, um it it's difficult. You're having to look from side to side. It's much more natural. Um and it's a much simpler mental process to to uh ascertain what's being said and conveyed.
I'd like to add to that also, captioning is used on TVs. When you look at that, mostly, like you may see, for an example, a sunrise, a a sun sunrise TV, the morning show, and you see the banner at the bottom of the TV. And it's got their logo there in the corner and there's a reel with words moving. That part of the TV screen um blocks some of the la- the layout. Because I've got the the banner at the bottom, the captioning on on top. So that takes up a lot of the screen of the people's faces and the people that are doing something on the TV. So it makes it harder to get all the information needed. Those banners at the bottom of the screens are very detrimental to be able to access all the information. But they need that there for their marketing.
I have one more thing I'd like to add. One problem with captioning. I'm trying to think how to answer this one. Similar to what Lorraine was saying, captions need to be positioned in a good space. But also, if we're not just talking about televisions, we're talking about devices that might be very small. Uh mobile phones, tablets. Me personally, I prefer to receive an English transcript rather than to watch captions, just in terms of how much time it takes to try to work out what's being said on the captions. It's much easier to just skim and take in what's in a transcript afterwards. So it really does depend. For many deaf people who live in New South Wales, um taxpayers in this state, they would like to get involved in what's happening in this area. And they just cannot do so because of the barriers to language.
Also, when we're talking about older Australians, there are often some visual degradation that happens over time. When captioning changes suddenly reels across the screen at speed, it can be hard to follow. Sometimes that can be really disorientating. So I feel like we're not getting the essence of what's being said on the screens. We may only be getting half the story or misinterpretations of the story. So please remember older Australian and their issues they may have with eyesight.
It's not only older people, really. There is another group that we've not mentioned yet, and that's those who are deaf blind. They miss out on so much. They can't see the captions. It really depends also on their frame of vision as well. Uh they can't hear, so they rely on whatever frame of vision they have, and that can vary.
And there people who have blindness, we need to remember that they've got different vision capabilities. Some of them have tunnel vision, some of them have good peripheral vision or not so good peripheral vision. There are different sections of their vision field that they're able to access. So when we're talking about the deaf blind community, um it's important to remember those variations.
Hmm.
Miss Boyd?
I just wanted to talk a little bit more then about the impact of, you know, when we're considering whether or not we have an interpreter in the room um with, you know, if we're talking about our parliamentary proceedings, um whether, you know, what the difference is between having somebody translating from a different part of the building and that being broadcast alongside proceedings in the chamber versus having somebody in the chamber. Um if you could explain, I guess, and I I think it's been clear from what you've been saying about the, you know, the delays and the not being able to see the speaker at the same time as the interpretation. But if you could just dr- bring that together for us um and and make it clear why it's required to be in the room with the speaker.
For me personally, when I have an interpreter in the room, I feel like I'm communicating directly to you. I can see you and I can see your language. There's not the barrier of technology. There's not the time lag. I feel like I am personally involved in what you are saying in this room, and that makes me feel comfortable. It makes me feel like we're virtually having a one-on-one conversation.
I'd like to answer, just to clarify, the idea of having an interpreter on a screen. You can see the picture there now in front of you here today. You can see that box and you can see me signing and you can see the interpreter there speaking. But you can't see all of that easily on a small device and see the interpreter clearly. So the cameras set up onto this screen today, I personally and most deaf people I know of would pre- would prefer to have the interpreter in the same space as the speaker so that they're the same size and able to be seen in the same place. If you've got a smaller device, the information um is inhibited. It's blocked in a way. Um it's much clearer, the clarity of the screen. Um here you can see two different boxes. One's clear and one's a little bit fuzzy because of different cameras and the different lighting and the bandwidth that's being used. There are so many factors that impact how clear the interpretation will look on the screen. But why? The main thing is having the people in the same space. But also having the interpreter next to who is actually speaking, not disconnected. Whichever person here in the room would be speaking, it would be great if the interpreter sat is right near them at the same time.
Also, those who are over s- sixty-five, they may not have access to technology devices. It depends on their financial means to purchase those devices. So again, that's another disadvantage. I would love deaf people to be feel that they are welcome to come to this parliament and to sit in the gallery and watch what the speakers are saying. Like Darlene says, my preference would be to be able to come in person and see an in-person interpreter there. I feel like that would make me feel truly involved.
And so logistically for us then, although what we've set up here is a a huge step forward from what we have when we have no um interpretation, uh having a interpreter slightly behind us as we're talking, um whether it's in a committee meeting or in the chamber would is logistically what would be best then is what I'm hearing. Is that correct?
Yes, that's right. Yes. I'm sure that you've read my submission that I wrote that I think it would be valuable to employ a full-time interpreter to work for the Australian government here and for the Australian government to pay them as a wage and hire them out perhaps to different people that need them who are doing TV media appearances and press conferences. I think that that would be wonderful to have a team on site who can manage that request.
I have a bit of a differing opinion. My preference, we need to understand the statistics here in New South Wales presently. We have about forty thousand deaf people. We have a hundred and forty, we have forty registered professional level certified interpreters who are able to manage the sort of content that would be required to be interpreted in parliament. So that means if you actually employed a a group of interpreters or even one interpreter, you're removing them from the community and their utilisation in health, medical, education settings, any areas where they're required to interpret it. So you're reducing the pool of interpreters that are available, that people need access to for their everyday lives. Really, the problem is we don't have sufficient interpreters for our basic needs in the community and in education. Um it's one of the biggest problems we have. Most deaf uh school students are in mainstream schools, no longer deaf schools. And the interpreters that are being used in those settings are not highly qualified if they're accredited at all. Um if the government perhaps would, yes, pull an interpreter out of the community, um it would mean there'd be access to, you know, seeing parliament um regularly. But it might endanger the safety of deaf people in the community, in their everyday lives in not having the access to the interpreting that they need in those other settings. It can take up to ten years to to train to become an interpreter. Uh the idea of having a pool of interpreters here in parliament is a lovely idea. But there just aren't sufficient resources in terms of interpreters in the state as a whole for community use. So it's like a catch twenty-two situation. We need them here, we need them there, we want them in both spaces.
I like Darlene's point there that she's raised about training. If more funds could be invested into training interpreters in New South Wales, that would help to remedy the situation. I think that it's a given that training's needed for all of everyone's work to be able to work appropriately. Um there is a delay, a lag in that and in the pool of interpreters. So funding could be provided to train the professional pool of interpreters, then there'll be more resources available.
If I can add, after the first wave of the pandemic, I guess, there was a, I think it's something like four hundred percent increase in enrolments to Deaf Connect as a result of seeing Auslan on screen. So I think we also need to think about the symbolic value of having um a representative here, an Auslan representative, so that deaf people firstly feel welcome to be part of these proceedings or to observe these proceedings, but also so that aspiring interpreters will actually see that there are places for them to be welcomed to, that there is a need, a cultural need and a push and a respect for these positions. Um and you're absolutely right. I take this point that there is a limited pool. But perhaps if there's increased government push and visibility, there might be um more of an investment across the board in interpreting.
Well, it's like, I mean, this is a very important point, isn't it? Because it's like any market, if you create the demand and the support, the supplier will come up. But your point, Darlene, is is that it takes a long time to bring them up to speed. So we need to get going on this quickly.
Yep. Yes, that's right.
And if if I, sorry, go ahead.
Also, Deaf Connect, the organisation that represents deaf people in Australia, they've provided a support, a document, a report on the economic benefit of Auslan interpretation. And I think that that would be good to have that here today to read what is involved and see the true economic benefit that there is to have deaf people being able to participate.
And just a a final question, because I know we are running out of time. Uh I think I take your point, Darlene. I think that's um incredibly important to remember. But I guess one of the things that comes through in um the submissions that we've now touched on, I think, uh is this leadership that the government could set here. And if we were to do something as groundbreaking as beginning to involve interpreters um in our proceedings, would that, in your view, encourage um and give the respect, I guess, to the interpretation um that we need in order to get more people uh to be interpreters?
Again, it really depends. It's a horse before the cart situation, having uh the balance of interpreters that can be seen uh and then also interpreters that are available to work. And also having hearing people see interpreters and aspire to becoming interpreters. And there's a balance also of interpreters in the wider community and having them available so that we can be participants in the community in a wider sphere. Also, we need to have a look at the language policies uh in all the government jurisdictions. Um education and mental health for deaf people, um that mental health area, my goodness. Um interpreting access is almost non-existent in most cases. We really need the support and we need that via language policy across the board. What's the point of building up a team of interpreters who aren't really there to uh provide what's needed for the basic human rights of the community they're there to support?
On that note, we might leave our questioning there. And I just wanted to again thank you for coming today. It's been wonderful to have you here. Uh indeed, I think we've learnt quite a lot from listening to you here this morning. And we may have some further questions and and we will um put those to you. And if you could um respond to those within twenty-one days, it's not a strict timeline. If you have trouble with that, then please let us know and we can accommodate that. But um I think it's been a really productive discussion here this morning. And I thank you again for for coming to us and and being part of this very historic committee hearing.
And you may have to encourage Nathan to do some interpreter training.
Indeed. So um hopefully we'll see you again in the Parliament of New South Wales and under different circumstances with uh an Auslan interpreter. Wouldn't that be good? Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Terrific. We're now back online, so welcome everybody again. And uh, I now am in a position to welcome our next panel of witnesses. Uh, Jen Blythe, Professor Mike Kent, Professor Katie Ellis and Brent Phillips. Um, I might just first of all invite Carly Bennett, who's the Auslan interpreter. I understand with a, a couple of those witnesses to swear a particular oath. Uh, which, do you have a copy of it Carly? Or do you want me to read it to you so you can then perhaps uh, respond?
Um, I do have a copy. I'm happy to read it.
Okay, if you could do that, please.
Um, I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
If, if we could ask you to add a little bit more because of your role. And that is to swear by almighty God that I will well and truly interpret the evidence that will be given. And do all other matters and things that are required of me in this hearing to the best of my ability. If you could say.
Uh, I could do that. If I could remember that whole thing.
If you could just say, I do so swear.
I do so swear.
Thank you. I think that will suffice for our purposes. Excellent.
Thank you. Um, sorry to interrupt. Before we proceed, is it possible for the Auslan interpreter in the room to be zoomed in on? It's actually quite hard to be seen. Um, and also Jen's just adding there that it's blurry.
We might just get our technical people to, to look at that for us as we proceed and we'll just see how we're able to enhance that for you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Now, if I could invite Professor Mike Kent and Professor Katie Ellis to please state. Your name and position and swear either an oath or affirmation. Perhaps starting with you, Professor Mike Kent.
Certainly, um, my name's Mike Kent or Michael Kent. Um, I'm a, um, professor in the Centre of Culture and Technology. And I worked at the Curtin High School. Um, and I, I would like to solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm. The evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Terrific. Thanks, Mike. Um, Professor Katie Ellis?
Sure, um, my name is Professor Kathleen Ellis. I'm a, also a professor in the Centre for Culture and Technology at Curtin University. I'm the director of, of that centre and I solemnly, sincerely and truly. Declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you, Katie. And can I now invite Catherine Miller and Brent Phillips? To, through the interpreter, state your name and position, title within the organisations you represent. And either swear an oath or an affirmation. Starting with Catherine Miller.
Um, so sorry to interrupt there. My name is actually Jen Bly. Um, Catherine is unwell today, so I've um, replaced her. Um, so I'm Jen Bly, the CEO of Defashtalia.
Hmm, okay, sorry Jen.
No worries. Um, okay, so. I solemnly and sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Great. Um, Mr Phillips?
Lovely. So my name is Brent Phillips. I'm the Chief Impact Officer at Deaf Connect. And I solemnly and silly and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you and welcome. Wonderful to have you here with us. And uh, would anyone like to start with a short statement? And please keep it short as we have a range of questions to ask.
I do have a statement, but I'm happy to, to follow um, the people from Deaf Australia and, and Deaf Connect if, if they want to give their statements first.
Sure. Um, I do still have a question. Um. I just want to make sure that we're able to be seen. Um. Just because I want to make sure that it's not the interpreters being shown or that they're seeing the interpretation of what we're being signed, just to make sure it's an authentic representation.
Uh, you are able to be seen uh, on the broadcast?
Um, according, we can see what's currently being broadcasted and we actually can't be seen at all.
There is a way to actually change that on how you present uh, on your device. I might just ask the secretariat to explain that.
Through you, Mister Chair, um, to enlarge the interpreter. If there's, if you scroll over, um, there are three dots. And if you click move to stage, you can expand the, the size of the interpreter on the screen, I understand.
Um, but what I mean is. So on the live stream, I'm looking at what can be seen through that broadcast. And currently what we can see is the interpreter box and the gentleman.
They're seeing you on the broadcast.
Um, again, through the chair, our WebEx is audio function, so once sound is made, the camera will then go to the witness, I understand.
Okay, well, I just would like to flag that as an issue, um, before I begin with my statement. Um.
Sorry, if you just wanna.
Sorry.
If you just want to make sound and then sign, that will then enlarge your picture to be on the live stream. And then when the interpreter starts to communicate your Auslan to English, the interpreter then will go large on the live stream. You just need to make sound before interpreting. I mean signing.
Well, that won't work because once I make a noise, then the interpreter starts interpreting into English. It'll revert back to seeing the interpreter, not us signing. So I just would like to flag that we are not being seen in a live stream and that isn't an authentic representation. Having to go through a third party, um, to have that information interpreted into English back into Auslan, um. Is not a true representation, um, of what I and Brent will be signing today.
It, it's Wes Fang here. Um, the, the way that the WebEx system works is it goes to the. It's a voice activated system or a sound activated system. So when.
I'll wear that.
When, uh, if you make a noise now, you should be then uh, transferred to the active speaking box. And then if you're signing, um, you should, should be, um, moved to the broadcast position.
Could I, could I interject here too? I don't, I don't think the point being made is about WebEx. I think it's, it's about the live broadcast. So we can see you in, in a window within WebEx. And within that window, there is also the Auslan interpreter, but we can't see ourselves in that window.
Could I ask the, um, yeah, if I could ask for clarification, when, just to be specific, when the, um. Uh, when we have Deaf Connect being up on uh, the screen. Will the broadcast have the interpreter in the box as well on that? Or is it, is the interpreter in the box only when the committee room is live?
Um, so this is what is currently being livestreamed. So what needs, ju- just to be clear. What Jen is asking for is for Jen and Brent to be seen, not the interpreter Carly to be seen. So Jen's just mentioning here, if we're using the WebEx um, application, it means that any deaf sign up will never be seen on a live stream. But that's okay. I don't want to continue um, discussing that. Just wanted to flag that as an issue moving forward. Uh, but I'm happy to uh, proceed with my statement and I apologize for um, the impact that's had on the time.
I understand that we are now trying to do what you have just put to us, but if we can proceed and see how that develops.
And thank you.
It's an important point you've made, so. Perhaps we could just wait and, until we, we have a moment to try a few things. And in the meantime, if um, if Jen, if you wanted to perhaps make your statement. And we just wait until we can improve the system, if we can, to enable uh, um. Brent and, um, sorry Brent and Jen, sorry. So if we could start with Mike and Katie might be the place. So if we could start with Mike and Katie might be the place to start while we try and enhance the system. So Katie or Mike, if you have something to say as a short statement, that would be great.
Sure. So, um, I think I'll go first, Mike. Um, thank you for the opportunity, um, to come and speak with you today about this important issue. Um, Professor Mike Kent and I are researchers from the Centre for Culture and Technology at Curtin University's High School in Faculty of Humanities. In, in our work, we examine questions around how cultural practices are changing in relation to digital technologies and digital media platforms. A key part of this work focus focuses on disability and accessibility in digital environments. So about ten years ago, we collaborated on a book called Disability and New Media, where we argued that when it comes to digital technology, there's no reason why environments should be accessible to people with all kinds of disability. Once digitized, information should be accessible in a diverse range of formats from audio to braille to large print to sign language. So our work proceeds from a model of disability. And this way of understanding disability sees disability as related to how we've created the world, including our digital environments. Disability is caused by s- social structures and is done to people who have impairments. For example, in the absence of accessibility features such as captions, audio description and sign language interpretation, audio visual mediums are disabling to people who can't see or hear. So the UN Convention on the Rights of Persons with Disability extends this social model of disability and creates a framework for removing socially creative barriers. It is our roadmap for ensuring that people with disability are able to enjoy human rights. The CRPD cites a number of digital rights, particularly in relation to communication, information and freedom of expression. For example, Article twenty one requires that state parties take all appropriate measures to ensure that persons with disabilities can exercise the right to freedom of expression and opinion, including the freedom to seek, receive and impart information and ideas on an equal basis with others and all forms of communication of their choice, as defined in Article two. Article two defines communication as taking place in a diverse range of alternative modes, means and formats. Sign language is one such format and is also highlighted in Article twenty one as a step towards achieving goals of the convention. So in twenty nineteen, prior to the pand- the COVID nineteen pandemic, the United Nations encouraged Australia to do more to promote and support the use of sign language and take steps to ensure the availability of qualified sign language interpreters. And then throughout the pandemic, we saw a definite promotion of Ausland interpreters at the daily Corona press conference briefing. This inclusion not only provided health communication to people who communicate by Ausland, it also normalized the presence of an Ausland interpreter. Australians came to accept this interpreter as a valued and valuable part of government communications. So in closing, um, we argue that the presence of an Ausland interpreter should not only be reserved for emergency settings and that an interpreter should be included whenever citizens seek, receive, uh, information. On-demand environment offer the flexibility to include Ausland interpreters as an option. And New South Wales Legislative Council had an opportunity now to show leadership on this issue and make steps towards achieving that through the United Nations Convention on the Rights of Persons with Disability by introducing Ausland interpretation to the broadcasting proceedings.
Thanks, Katie. Um, Mike, do you wanna make a short statement?
I, I do, if that's okay. Uh, just following up on what Katie has said. Access to government is an important aspect of access to citizenship. Um, the, um, the Convention on the Rights of People with Disabilities, the, the UN Convention, um, under that, we have the obligation to progressive realisation regarding accessibility. This means that we, as a country through the UN, have recognized that what is what is, what is considered acceptable accessibility evolves and changes over time. Now, we can see that just recently Australia's been found in breach of this convention, um, regarding audio description. Um, and tha- that's currently, um, under adjudication. But I suppose it's our, our position that the New South Wales Parliament should be an exemplar and should lead the, lead a process of this evolving accessibility. Um, beyond our international treaty obligations, it's more, this creates more inclusive citizenship for people with disabilities in New South Wales and across Australia.
Thanks, Mike. Um, now, I understand, uh, Jen and Brent that, uh, we can now manually flip it to you, um, and I think that might work. So why don't we do that? Am I getting the nod over there? Is that coming up correctly for you?
There's a delay in their broadcast.
There perhaps is a bit of a delay?
The broadcast is.
Okay, when, when we try and do this, if everybody could be quiet so that we don't have, uh, the system trigger on someone saying something and see if we can't manually fix that.
Are you happy for me to start? Sorry, just checking. Are you happy for me to start? That's from Jen. Okay, great. Thank you. Look, just a really short statement, um, just talking about accessibility and equality for deaf people and hard of hearing people in Australia, same as those people who are able to hear and also other people within Australia. So it all connects to all things from education to government. In New South Wales, the Disability Inclusion Act states that it's about accessibility and having those equal rights to everybody else. Having the right to participate in social and economic benefits and also inclusion is within that space. The UN CRPD has ratified that on a few different articles, Article nine, ninety-one and twenty-nine. And specifically, that's about participants and making decisions in regards to your personal life, being, being able to make those decisions in regards to voting, receiving information and also including, being included in those different areas. And that is all part of this. It means that a deaf person is able to access information in regards to, um, all information that they require as part of their life and could become and choose to become, um, a politician or any type of career that they might like to have in their life. And it's about that accessibility. Our position is to make sure that information is there, not just in regards to emergencies, but in relation to anything that they might need to know that is relevant to them as a person, regardless of their, um, demographics or their history or their religion. So it's about making sure that they have the right to access all information within a timeframe that's appropriate, um, so that they can make an educated decision on anything that might affect them as well. Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you very much. I presume, uh, Brent, um, that you're not making a statement? Okay, excellent. Well, we might then move to questions.
I would like to make a short statement.
Oh, sorry, Brent. Well, if we can then, um, pass to you and just give the moment for the system to catch up.
Okay, great. Lovely, thank you. I'm from Deaf Connect with the largest service provider, um, and social impact organisation in Australia. I'd like to acknowledge the New South Wales Parliament for actually opening this inquiry to ensure that the needs of the deaf community in New South Wales, um, and their ability to access information and understanding government conversations and procedures is really important. So thank you. We provide Ausland interpreting services in New South Wales and we also provide Ausland training as well as interpreting training within New South Wales as part of our RTO. We have a really in-depth understanding in regards to current challenges and issues in the provision of Ausland interpreters and also about accessibility for deaf people in New South Wales and the training pathways available. Our strongest recommendation is that, yes, to continue exploring the possibility of provision of interpreting within New South Wales parliaments, um, parliamentary events, debates, uh, hearings and all of that information. But at the same time, considering strategically a broader approach in regards to the interpreting situation. There are a lot of people in New South Wales that are unable to access interpreters in hospital appointments, in their, um, employment, in schools, um, police, justice systems. And so we need to really consider about the strategic approach there on what that impact has. Um, and so what we're recommending is that an Ausland workforce, um, a work task force should be implemented, focusing on the language and communication needs of deaf people in New South Wales. And accessing parliament is just one part of people's lives within New South Wales. There are also other people that will be talking about, um, the UN in regards to the context of the CRPD and I, I definitely support those comments that have already been made and understanding that that people need to be aware of governmental information and to be able to make informed decisions as well, so that they can access and be equal citizens. So very much looking forward to, um, uh, this conversation. Thank you.
Look, thank you very much, Brenton. I might just start right there and, um, given your expertise and the expertise of the panel in terms of, uh, Ausland interpreters, I understand there's only about forty in New South Wales and it takes quite a long period of time for them to reach a, a highly qualified level, up to eight years. I just wondered, what is the unmet need in relation to Ausland, um, interpreters in New South Wales? Uh, what sort of level of investment do you think's required in order to ensure that unneed, that unmet need is met? Um, and indeed, uh, what processes besides, I think the Ausland Work Task Force, do you think would needs to be put in play in order to ensure that we can effectively, uh, move forward here in parliament with Ausland interpreters in the future?
Lovely, thank you. I think Darlene, um, did talk about some of those statistics this morning. There's about a hundred and fifty-five qualified interpreters in New South Wales. One hundred and seven are provisional certified interpreters, which means they aren't, um, appropriately qualified to be able to interpret in complicated settings like this or mental health or so forth. There are forty-seven fully certified interpreters, which is quite a small pool of interpreters and for the four thousand or more signing deaf people within the New South Wales community. I think really what is critical is looking at this from a long-term perspective, that this is not something that can be fixed overnight and really consider about developing that strategy in regards to increasing the level of interest in Ausland as well as encouraging people to learn Ausland, but investing in the teaching and the workforce so that we have appropriate, we have skilled people um, who are able to teach Ausland as well, um, so that that can therefore create further pathways for people to become interpreters. There are a lot of, um, gaps there as well as, um, thinking about professional development and mentoring and also making sure that those people that do become interpreters do have, uh, a variety of different pathways that they can pursue, whether that be legal, government, politics, mental health and so forth. So it's really a collaborative effort and that can be led by the New South Wales, um, government uh, working with the deaf community. And just from Jen, I, I fully support what Brent has said there. And it's also important to recognize that unmet need from interpreters also covers a variety of areas. Those forty-seven interpreters have to meet the needs of interpreting in court, serious situations where a high-level interpreter is required. And so if that small pool of people that can interpret it for, for those types of situations, um, are also interpreting for that, that can have an impact. So just considering that as well. And so if I could add one more thing from Brent, um, the service from a service provider perspective, where about eighty to ninety percent of jobs are provi- um, are provided. So the more that we are, are aware of in regards to, sorry, so some people we are aware can't access interpreters, so they find other ways to do that. Or the schedule is adjusted to try and allow for more interpreting to be provided, um. And sometimes there can be the occasion that, um, an incorrectly skilled or incorrectly, um, qualified person is provided. So there's no one easy solution, um, to that question.
Okay, thank you. I might just pass to Miss Abigail Boyd.
Thank you very much and thank you to all of you, uh, for attending today and for your advocacy, um, in this area. Um, I think we've touched on the workforce issues, um, a little bit. But if you could perhaps, um, elaborate on the impact beyond, um, simply, uh, m- making parliaments, when I say simply, it's not simple, uh, beyond making parliament's proceedings more accessible, um, to the message that it sends when a government, um, provides leadership on an issue like this to the deaf community as a whole. Perhaps I could start with you, Jen. Sorry.
Yep, no worries there. So if New South Wales Parliament have interpreters there, that really does demonstrate, um, that deaf people are citizens and that it's, that they're being seen as people that are worthwhile to have information received through their language and also has an impact on their ability to vote as well. And that's a powerful statement. S- having that access means that there's also more opportunity to have further conversations. Um, voting will be, um, more appropriate because they'll have a more informed decision to be able to make appropriate decisions as well. So that would have quite a powerful impact. We've seen overseas that there are numerous countries that have interpreters provided in parliament and it's seen there that it meant that there are more politi- politicians as well as more informed decisions and people are able to have those further debates. But thinking about people as well, um, those that are literate, uh, or have further English literacy skills do have the time to be able to research that information further and that's a very entitled cohort. And so it means that that information, those people who are able to hear information, um, through, uh, verbal means um, have further in, access to that information compared to deaf people. And really, having access to that information, you can't put a price on it.
Um, thank you. We know that this is a, uh, an international human rights obligation. Um, or at least I know that, uh, that that is the case. Um, but yet we have a number of jurisdictions around the world who don't provide this sort of access. Of those that do, which would you view as being the gold standard? Which, where, where, where should we be looking? Um, if we want to, to follow suit?
Just trying to work out who wants to answer. Uh, look, that's a great question there. I think, uh, colleagues in New Zealand have a very good approach to providing the deaf community in New Zealand access to parliamentary proceedings and information. You can see that the Prime Minister always has an interpreter beside them. Um, parliamentary just debates and discussions, uh, regularly have interpreters as well. And so really, I would like to acknowledge New Zealand, um, and the sign language that they have there, which was established as New Zealand, um, Sign Language Board, so that those key strategic workforce decisions and investment decisions in regards to sign language can be preserved and grown. So I think there's a lot to learn from our neighbours in New Zealand.
Thank you.
Uh, as well as, um, Europe. Sorry.
Just sorry, before I hand over to my colleagues, did anybody else want to contribute, um, to that question?
Yes, if that's okay. Um, I think that as a, as a, as a wealthy developed country, um, we should really be looking as to ourselves as leaders. Um, well, Australia traditionally has been a bit of a, a laggard when it comes to different aspects of accessibility, particularly in relation to communications technology. But, uh, you know, there's a changing media landscape and we really have the opportunity now to, to lead the world. So perhaps it should be more a question of what can we do best rather than what other people are doing that we can emulate? So perhaps it should be more a question of what can we do best rather than what other people are doing that we can emulate?
Thank you.
Okay, I might just pass to Mark Bardeke.
There's been mentioned in the submissions that during the pandemic. Particularly with the press conferences of the former premier, that there was a conscious effort to provide. The Ausland interpreting and how that was a very positive thing in terms of access. I'm just interested to know what your insights are into the motivation behind that and why that would have dropped off post. It's not necessarily a political criticism of the government. I'm more interested to know. Whether that's emblematic of a passive view towards Ausland. In other words. Let's do this because obviously during such an existential threat. We need to provide all people with information, but when it dies off, it's not really that important. So is that sort of an example of the general government attitude towards the deaf community?
Yes. Look, really, I do want to acknowledge that it did originate from the fires. Two thousand and nineteen and the deaf community with Def Australia really advocated for interpreters to be on those conferences. Because of not having access to information in regards to when they needed to evacuate and so forth. That then linked into Covid and so it had that momentum there to make sure that interpreters would be provided for emergencies. You are right though, it did become something that was only in regards to those emergencies. And so after, after that crisis there, it did mean that those interpreters did start to dwindle. But interpreters should not. Interpreters should not be the canaries for all hearing people to be able to see an interpreter. Therefore, it means that this information is serious. It should be that interpreters should just be provided. We do appreciate that there were interpreters throughout that emergency period, absolutely. But it should not be that that is the common practice to only provide them through those situations. And from Brent, if I could add. There was also the floods in Queensland, the bushfires as well. And throughout the Australian community, it is known to see an interpreter on TV when there is bad news coming or there's that emergency situation. But you don't see interpreters for good news, for funding allocations, for other fantastic things that are happening. And it is important to us and would assist us in understanding about what is happening in our country. Why the interest rates are going up or down. And so then that way we are able to make informed decisions in regards to our lives. At the moment, it's only when things are bad do we see an interpreter. Having access provided to all situations regardless of the nature, if it's boring or exciting or an emergency or not, having access. But there is a delay there in regards to having access to what our peers do have here in Australia. And if I could just add to that as well. It's not okay for the government to make that decision regards to which announcements should have interpreters or not. And I would like to acknowledge that there are more interpreters being seen on occasion. But they are still very ad hoc and dependent on what are the whims of the. Whoever it is that wants an interpreter for that information. So the history there is often missing, it's just quite randomised. And being aware of who makes those decisions as far as who provides an interpreter or when one is provided. It's not okay. It needs to make sure that there is a standardisation in regards to when interpreters are provided and how. And if that decision means that it's not all the time, that that needs to be well considered.
And just following up from the earlier point about the gold standard jurisdiction, if you like, of New Zealand. Where there seems to be a systematic approach to this. Because on earlier evidence, there was mention of an issue with the supply side. In other words, we just don't have enough Ausland interpreters to be able to come up and meet the demand. Do we have any feeling or statistics on the amount of available Ausland or New Zealand. Language-based, sign language-based interpreters. That came up to meet the demand as a result of New Zealand being more proactive? In other words, has that supply problem been fixed in New Zealand because of their most more proactive approach, I guess is my question?
From my understanding, it would be great to have a represent, represent, sorry. It would be great to have somebody from New Zealand Parliament representing here today. We can't really speak for them. What we know is that the supply-demand issue is not unique to just Australia, it is a global challenge. I think there is more so an issue in Australia because the government and state governments have made different types of commitments. In regards to provision of interpreters through NDIS or also through the Employment Assistance Fund. So the need of interpreters has increased, but the workforce hasn't been able to keep up with that demand. And so that gap has become more pronounced. Regardless of what's happening out there, we really do need to take a good look at our own pathways and our own workforce challenges. And how we might be able to mitigate or resolve some of those issues. Parliamentary interpreting is one of those things that need to become. One of those more holistic approaches as part of the interpreting industry workforce issue.
And can I just, just a quick follow-up on that point? So can you, can you just elaborate on that point you made? On what appeared to be a disparity between the federal government's emphasis on this and resourcing vis-à-vis state jurisdictions? Is the implication that the federal government's doing a lot more in this space?
Sorry, who was that question directed to?
Anyone that would like to answer?
Look, I could, I wouldn't say either are doing better or worse compared to each other, they're just different. I wouldn't be able to give you an absolute concrete answer to your question there. I don't think in Australia we do have that gold standard yet. And if I could add there, also just to clarify my point from before, it was more that there are different programmes and services. And access to funding that Ausland is included as part of. So it's a very ad hoc approach to interpreting provision. Rather than a joint strategy to ensure that all the different programmes and services are able to meet the needs of the deaf community. So that's where we're trying to come from, to make sure that the government. And that commitment there to deliver, also invest in the workforce so that that can be achieved.
Pass to the Honourable Wes Fane.
Hello and welcome. Thank you very much for appearing today and providing us some insights. The question I have is around the use of technology. And the ability for technology to be employed to accurately convey. To a deaf person or somebody who has hearing difficulties. The emotions that Ausland. In an interpreter sense can provide to a deaf person. So with that, I mean, we're getting much better with technology that we can use voice recognition during captioning. In certain instances, we can use the ability to. Communicate with the broadcast system and the technology. So that we have a written word. But it appears to me that Ausland provides an emotive experience. That is lost through captioning. Is there on the horizon at all? A technology that will be able to communicate in a similar way that Ausland does? Without being reliant on interpreters? Is there a, is there any technology or any works that are happening? In order to provide algorithms or a. A computerised system that might be able to sign with emotive sense? A human-like figure that could perhaps be used. With voice recognition to be able to communicate across a digital medium? I hope that wasn't too complicated.
Maybe I could respond to this question. There's always technology being developed. Around these kinds of ideas and we have seen, as you mentioned, seen massive progress in terms of accuracy on captions. But I think in the, in the sign language and in the Ausland space, the technology is just not there yet. To achieve what you're talking about because Ausland is sort of a whole of body communication experience. It's not just about having avatars of hands. So there is international, you know, work. And I could, I could find some examples of that for you. I don't have any. Maybe Mike could help me out here. But I think these technologies are a long way away and they're not something that you could achieve in. In the short term, what we're talking about here today. This, this technology will come and it is always being worked on.
I would probably say it's, I would be more optimistic, I think, and say that it's probably a medium-term. Potential. It just requires resources and, and, and a focus.
If I could also add to that, I do appreciate your intentions behind asking that question and I can see where you're coming from. You're thinking about possible solutions there to a very humanistic issue or challenge. And I, and I do appreciate that point of view there. But from a deaf community perspective. It really. Is something that if it is hearing-driven, researched by people who are hearing. It's that focus on avatars and AIs and without having the deaf community's involvement as part of that process. Or without having the deaf community's intent as well as part of that process is quite an issue. Definitely worthwhile in regards to that research, but there is no substitute in regards to. Having an avatar instead of, instead of an Ausland interpreter. Ausland is a real language. It has its own emotions, its intonation. All of that is part of that language. And so within one sentence, how you could sign it would be very different, dependent on the emotional intent behind there. And so having an avatar to be able to interpret that information could change depending on one tonal change of a word and how it's used. So if I give you an example of the word run. So if someone runs fast, you can sign that differently. Or if someone's running excitedly, you sign it differently. And you can see how they're actually signing the different intent behind how that person is running, which is very different. And so thinking about how artificial intelligence or an avatar might be able to convey that is, is very difficult. Just to add to that as well, in regards to live captioning, I, I am aware that there are improvements there. But captioning again doesn't capture the nuances or the tones or the intended meaning there. And if you think about someone who regularly relies on captions, you actually wouldn't recommend that as an appropriate substitute. Regardless of how good it is, there are still delays, there are still technical issues and still information that is missed.
I was going to say it's surprising because I think maybe something was lost in translation. But in the fact that it was lost in translation, we've just got the perfect answer. What I was seeking was how reliant Ausland is on that personal emotive. Connection during the signing. Because much of what we do in politics is often about emotion when we're talking. So where words on paper may convey a certain meaning. The way that we deliver it sometimes completely changes the words to mean. And communicate something else. I imagine when Ausland interpreters are speaking through their emotions. Their facial expressions, as much as they use their hands, they are communicating something completely different. And how much of that would be lost if we went to something like a caption system? But an AI system that can sign the words but not convey the emotion?
If I could add to that as well, particularly in the context of parliament. The conversations there, the word choices that are picked often have numerous different meanings. You might be saying one thing but mean something else and you might be asking a question deliberately. And there's a lot of innuendo, not innuendo, sorry, but a lot of subtext there that isn't just about what words are being used alone. And so that's quite a skill in regards to understanding that and understanding the motivation of each party. And each MP, their life journey and also their portfolio. And everything comes into play there and the ability there to interpret that information, to ensure that that is conveyed. Having an avatar, you would lose all of that. I mean, yes, it's nothing, it is quite nice to have that aspiration perhaps in fifty or a hundred years. But it is not something that we can be, that is coming anytime soon in regards to that.
Thank you.
And sorry, if I could just add one further thing. I guess why. Thinking about avatars, having a replacement for people who are using English in parliament is nothing that would ever be thought of either. So I guess that need there is required for Ausland as well.
Okay, well, that's a good segue into a question I'd like to ask. And it's going back to resourcing and the practical perhaps realities of. Not having enough fully certified interpreters to meet the need across the state. If, you know, the perfect gold standard would be to have all the proceedings in the New South Wales Parliament. With an Ausland interpreter. Given workforce constraints, are there particular areas that you see as a priority? That would be perhaps something that we could do, perhaps a pilot programme on to start the ball rolling? So we can learn incrementally how to do this better as we're sort of learning today. How to run these, these sort of committee hearings better. Would it perhaps, in the experience overseas, been to focus on question time and to focus on particular large statements? Or indeed if we look at how it was used in emergency services, sort of announcements. Sort of perhaps a cascading level of engagement. But obviously looking at the most important areas that would be of interest to people who are looking for that service. I'd be interested in your views on that.
Okay. Look, I would look at this as a five-year project or a five-year roadmap. You could start currently with having interpreters for all press conferences, whether the news being given is good or bad. That could be done fairly quickly. At the same time, in parallel as that, having that workforce to, and that focus there. In order to be able to design an Ausland workforce or Ausland strategy for New South Wales. That would therefore ensuring that the New South Wales deaf community have access to interpreters in all avenues of their life. In addition to that, developing a pilot, as you've mentioned, perhaps a small team of interpreters for parliament. So that in five years' time, that can continually be building over that way to get to providing further access. And so that won't have as much impact to the deaf community by taking away too many interpreters from other avenues of their life. But although also have that focus on a long-term. But although also have that focus on a long-term phased approach. And with deaf people being involved every step of the way of that. And if I, I'll just add to that, I do agree. And one area that interpreters um need to be aware of is about those deaf skills and having the different pathways to interpreting. And if people only interpret in parliament, um those that want to become interpreters might not be interested in working in other avenues, but that's okay. Um because they're interested in working in that particular field of interpreting. So we're able to cover um the provision of interpreting and that won't have an impact on other aspects um of interpreting provision for the community. So that's also something else to look at.
Uh, Michael, or uh would you like to comment on that or Katie?
I'd just really like to echo the point that's been made a few times already that we should have Auslan interpreted on news that's good or bad. I think if if you were to do a pilot, really include the interpreting around non-emergency settings as well. So I really like that idea and I I think also we're, part of my research is looking at representation as as a way towards inclusion and I think by having more Auslan interpreting happening, such as in the context we're talking about, people will become exposed to it and attracted to Auslan interpreting as as a career choice. So it feeds into this supply issue there. I have a colleague in the U S, Professor Beth Haller, who does work on this and she's she's found that following increased visibility of American sign language in popular culture, it then became a language that high school high school students start learning in high school and that has that feeds into that supply chain we've also spoke about here today.
Mike?
Yeah, I suppose it's also um illustrative of where we are. That when you ask that question around parliamentary proceedings, we go straight to press conferences, which obviously are a different form of political communication, but that seems sort of the the level of access that we can we can hope for at the moment. Um, and I think that these, the, you know, I think the point everyone's made around constraints around the workforce are really important. But going back to my earlier sort of statement, I suppose, about the parliament being an exemplar, trying to develop that workforce to then fill the role, I suppose, of making parliamentary procedure accessible, which is obviously going to require the development of the workforce further. The 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 potential for parliament to be the place that drives that, I think, is really important. So I'm sorry, that doesn't answer your question. That's more a comment around your question.
That's useful nonetheless. Miss Boyd?
Um, thank you, Chair. I guess just reflecting on that then, um I hear the point about the press conferences and I know that we heard um when we were uh pushing the government to include uh interpreters in every um uh public announcement, the response we got was, you know, basically um people should tune in to see if they'd be an interpreter, um rather than being um able to expect that there'd be an interpreter, uh which is clearly problematic. Um, but in a similar light, in terms of, I guess, what we're doing at the moment is trying to to identify the most important of the information to then have a translation for. Is that missing the point, do you think? And should we also be looking at, I guess, providing interpretation of some of the more minor things in parliament? And I'm I'm thinking here, bear with me, but I'm thinking here of, for example, um in a chamber proceeding when we have, you know, in the Legislative Council, there will be somebody speaking, but there will be a whole lot of heckling. There'll be a whole lot of other things in the chamber that are going on that actually informs uh what the speaker is saying at that time and what the mood and um I guess the vibe of of the chamber is at that time. If you were reading Hansard, you wouldn't necessarily pick up on that. Not everything is recorded. Should we be also trying to somehow in the interim capture that more fully in the written record um of of proceedings? Is there something we can do in the interim to to help bring that colour um for people who can't um hear it for themselves? Anyone want to have a stab at that?
If I could add there, I think that'd be great for accessibility overall for everyone. But part of the challenges that we have is that not all deaf people um have great literacy skills. And so a high percentage of deaf Australians, um of the signing community, their literacy levels are roughly the same as a grade six to grade eight student. And so thinking about someone um with that level of literacy literacy to be able to understand those proceedings in a written text, but also the amount of time it would take to read it as well. And I think that's definitely a fantastic recommendation, um just accessibility in regards to everyone to access that. Um, but in regards to a solution for deaf people, um it's not really, um I I would say a recommendation.
And in terms of, I guess, other jurisdictions that have um made some progress on this, um to what extent have they been required to change their practices in order for the interpretation to work? So, for example, I can imagine if you were giving a set speech, like in a German speech, where people aren't um or people are encouraged not to interrupt, it seems it would be a much easier thing to have somebody interpreting live as opposed to uh question time, for instance, when you have multiple people yelling at once. Um, have other uh jurisdictions solved for that sort of more chaotic um procedures uh in parliament? Or have people had to, I guess, moderate themselves in order for um that interpretation to to make more sense?
Look, I actually don't know the answer to that, but I'm happy to take that on notice.
Yeah, that would be incredibly useful. Um, and you know, I don't think it'd be a bad thing if we um calmed our proceedings slightly to to accommodate. I think it might be better for democracy anyway, but yes, thank you. It's one of the challenges we'll need to deal with.
But you certainly won't have an objection from the President of the Legislative Council for no yelling in the uh the House. But look, uh that brings us to a close. Can I thank thank you all for being with us today? It's been terrific to have the chance to have a discussion with you and indeed a most historic area for the Legislative Council and this parliament and we're we're very keen to to move down that pathway and how we manage to to bring that to reality is a is a challenge that we will continue to grapple with. So thank you for your contribution today. Uh, questions that have been taken on notice or other questions that committee members might have, we will actually um send to you. And if you could be um so kind as to respond to those within twenty-one days, but if you need more time, just let us know and we'll be most appreciated. So again, thank you very much for being with us today and uh we'll have a short break from the proceedings for morning tea and uh reconvene with some of those panelists you might wish to also listen to about what's happening in other jurisdictions to pick up some of the experience in New Zealand and other Australian jurisdictions. So we're looking forward to that as well. So thank you once more.
We can go live.
Okay. Well, welcome everybody. And my name's Matthew Mason Cox. I'm the chairman of the Procedure Committee, President of the Legislative Council of New South Wales. Glad to have you with us today. Appreciate you spending the time with us on a very important area. I know that some of you are a little bit more advanced than we and we are certainly looking forward to learn from you today. So before we start, I believe we'll need to actually sign you in, so to speak. So first of all, welcome, just to be sure we have everybody, Nicole Lorder, Tom Duncan, Dr David Monk, David Wilson and Andre Lom. If you're not here, please let me know. And I might just invite you all to either take the oath or swear an affirmation. So perhaps if we start with Nicole Lorder. You're on mute, I think, Nicole.
I'm not sure if we've been sent a copy of the affirmation. Mr Duncan, do you know?
I believe you have, but if you don't have it, we could perhaps read it to you and...
That would be lovely.
Okay, would you like the oath or the affirmation, Nicole?
The affirmation, thank you.
Okay. The affirmation is, I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. Do you so affirm?
I do.
Thank you. Now, if I could call on Tom Duncan, you'll have it there, Tom.
Sadly, Mr President, I don't, but in the ACT, we don't do oaths or affirmations before witnesses give evidence. We just acknowledge the witness statement. So if you don't mind doing the oath for me, I'm happy to oblige.
I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help me God, so do you, so swear.
I so swear, Mr President.
Dr David Monk?
I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
David Wilson?
I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
And Andre Lom?
As President, I don't have the oath, I'll do the oath, thank you.
The oath, just so that we're absolutely clear, I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help me God, do you so swear?
I so swear, Mr President.
Thank you very much. So welcome. It is a most historic Inquiry Committee hearing here today in New South Wales Parliament House. And we've just heard from representatives of a range of groups across Australia about the use of Ausland. And indeed, some of your jurisdictions were invoked in those discussions. And we're very keen to understand what's happening in each of your jurisdictions and indeed what might be planned in the not so distant future. So perhaps if we could start with a short statement from each of you as to where things are at and we might take it from there. So perhaps if we could start with you, Nicole.
Thank you, Mr President. Thanks for inviting representatives of the ACT Legislative Assembly to appear before your committees today. We've had about seven or so years' interaction with Ausland interpreters. But what we currently have, not as I understand what your committee might be considering, but I will briefly explain our journey and how we got to where we are at the moment. And it largely came about because prior to my election, I worked in the Deafness Sector for some time as the CEO of the Deafness Forum of Australia, where I had considerable engagement with the Australian Federation of Disability Organisation, meetings with the Australian Rights Commission during discussions on the UN Convention on the Rights of People with Disabilities. I was a member of the Accessible Public Transport National Advice Committee, for example, and a member for about five years of the National People with Disabilities and Carers Minister of Advisory Council that advised Bill Shorten as Parliamentary Secretary for Disabilities at that time. And I was on many other committees and fora right up until my election as a member of the Legislative Assembly for the ACT in 2013. So I went to the Canberra Institute of Technology two nights a week for a couple of years to learn Ausland. So I have a very basic ability to communicate with my deaf friends, but I'm nowhere near fluent and certainly not able to interpret. But it meant that when I was a kid, I saw the need for at least occasional Ausland interpreting in the ACT Legislative Assembly. And this began in October 2014 when I wanted an Ausland interpreter present for a German speech on the National Week of Deaf People. And under our standing orders, specifically Stand Order 210, strangers were not allowed on board the parliament. However, special permission was granted in this instance. About a year later, I moved an amendment to our standing orders to allow an Ausland interpreter to be allowed onto the chamber floor without seeking permission. So the matter was referred to our Standing Committee on Administration and Procedure to consider that change to Standing Order 210. And in 2015, in October, the change was debated in the chamber with an Ausland interpreter on the floor by leave and the amendment to Standing Order 210 was approved. Since then, an interpreter has been requested and used on the floor five times, usually for matters relating directly to deaf people. For example, a private member's motion on deaf mental health. And because of that change to standing order, we don't have to seek leave for this. Now, I could also mention at this time that the ACT only has a very small number of qualified Ausland interpreters and creating a pipeline of emerging interpreters is very challenging. And the few that we do have are in high demand during emergencies. They are outstanding interpreters, advocates for them with the deaf community. And while the change to our step, allowing an Ausland interpreter onto the floor, has been welcomed by members of the Canberra community, I feel it's only a precaution because quite obviously deaf people will have an interest in all matters affecting the ACT residents, not just about deaf specific issues. You know, they're interested in the budget rates, youth employment, new suburb development, et cetera, et cetera. So whilst our journey has led us to this point of having an interpreter on the floor without seeking leave, I'm sure there's a way to go. So I'm very much looking for suggestions and recommendations of this committee. Sure they'll be keenly brought by the Parliaments too. And thank you to the producer today and I'm sure the clerk and Dr Monk and I are happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Nicole. I just should note that the clerk of the Parliament's, David Blunt, has appeared in the audience. So no doubt he'll be listening very closely and a friend of many of you, I'm sure, from many years ago and continues to this day. So I might just ask you perhaps, Tom and David, if you want to add anything to what Nicole has just said.
Mr President and members of the com... I'm conscious of the time constraints of your committee and I'm conscious that my colleagues, David and Andres, have got contributions. So I don't really have anything to add except to congratulate Ms Lorder because Ms Lorder was really the pioneer and the instigator of many of these changes. And we've got to where we are now mainly because of Ms Lorder. So but as Ms Lorder said, I'm happy to answer questions after we've heard from New Zealand, the Victorian colleagues.
Okay, terrific. David, nothing else from you or...? Okay, terrific. Okay, then could we perhaps listen to David Wilson out of...?
Thanks, Mr President, and good afternoon from New Zealand. New Zealand Sign Language is an official language in New Zealand. All members have the right to address the House in New Zealand Sign Language. Sign language interpretation is provided for question time during New Zealand Sign Language Week and every year during the budget statement and leaders' replies to the budgets, as well as during debates of particular significance to the deaf community or other significant debates. It's also provided on demand for select committees where people wish to give evidence in New Zealand Sign Language. The standing orders don't make any particular provision for sign language interpretation, but as clerk, I've got responsibility for broadcasting, so decisions about providing sign language interpretation are at my discretion, though members can request it to be provided for particular items of business. Our sign language interpreters aren't participants in the proceedings of the House, so the rules state they shouldn't be brought into proceedings or involved in subsequent discussions of proceedings by members. In 2018, I considered expanding our sign language interpretation coverage for House broadcasts to provide oral questions interpretation every sitting day. After a trial period, we went to market to look for expressions of interest. The only organisation to express interest in providing the service withdrew from consideration though because there were not sufficient qualified interpreters available to provide the service and still meet the regular needs of the deaf community. So consequently, that further rollout was suspended and we've been unable to find any alternative ways of providing the service to date, though I remain open to doing that. I'm happy to answer any questions about the New Zealand experience of providing New Zealand Sign Language, if that's of help to the committee.
Thanks very much, David. And Andre, Andre, you might comment on the Victorian experience, please.
Thanks, Mr President, committee members. Thanks for this opportunity. Over the past five years, we've been looking at ways in which to make parliamentary information more accessible to all Victorians and we've had a particular focus on members of the deaf community. It really began after we had a deaf group of people participate in our youth parliament in 2017 and we met with them afterwards to find out what their experience was like in terms of the services and arrangements. And we found us really interesting things that a number of palmetree terms aren't available in sign language. There aren't specific signs for palmetree language. So they suggested to us a project to develop signs for palmetree terms, which we accepted their proposal. And we started to work with this group of young deaf community members on a range of projects that would provide better access for deaf community members to palmetree information, palmetree channels. One of the projects we adopted was the development of an Ausland Parliament bulletin, which was produced in conjunction with these young deaf community members, where we would produce a video bulletin once a month for most of the year in sign language, providing information about parliament committees, parliament's legislation, parliamentary events to the deaf community in video format. That's been a really successful programme for us. We've had lots of really good feedback from the deaf community about providing parliamentary information in an accessible format. We worked with the deaf community on conducting some workshops with community members around the Parliament vocab project. And that's a continuing project for us. Last year, we launched some initial signs in Ausland, palmetree signs, and we'll be continuing that work over the next few years. As part of the project, we also introduced public tours in Ausland, specifically in Ausland for our building, where we invited deaf community members to participate with an Ausland interpreter signing on those tours. We started to... We have an... Over the course of the year, we have a number of events that we do, Facebook Live webinars, and we included Ausland interpreters in all those webinars to make sure that they, all those webinars, were accessible to the deaf community. And again, we've had good feedback on that. We have a programme here at the Victorian Parliament called the Youth Associate Programme, where we employ young people for around 160 hours over a three-month period where they work on a community engagement project with us to engage members of their community. And for the first time last year, we employed a deaf youth associate. And she worked with us on a number of projects to make parliamentary information more accessible to the deaf community. During the last... During the National Week of Deaf People and the International Day of Sign Languages, we ran some deaf awareness training for palmetree staff to make them aware of Ausland and how to use it and the different parts of sign language. We also ran a Facebook Live event where we had a deaf community member participate to speak about or to sign about sign language that also connected with First Nations languages. And it was a really interesting Facebook Live event. It's available on our Facebook Live page if anyone wants to view it. We've also been working with our committees to try and get information about committees out to the deaf community and including having Ausland interpreters for particular hearings. In one case, we had an inquiry about access to TAFE for people with a disability. And the report that was produced, we produced a video summary of that in sign language to ensure that deaf community could understand the recommendations and get the sense of what the report was about. So now we continue to have Ausland interpreters for all our webinars. And we're now looking forward to the opening of our parliament after the next, after this upcoming state election. And we will provide Ausland interpreters as part, we're aiming to provide Ausland interpreters for the opening of parliament proceedings. That's a bit of a summary, I think, Mr President, of some of the work that we've been doing with the deaf community.
Look, thanks, Andre. That's terrific. Really gives us a good flavour of what's not only happening but about to happen and obviously where we're on this pathway as well. And one of the issues that most of you have touched on is the workforce issue. And it's something that's come up every time we have this discussion, given that there are just a limited number of fully qualified Ausland interpreters or in the case of New Zealand interpreters. And indeed, how we manage that workforce issue to ensure we don't take away much-needed interpreters from other needs that the deaf community might have and how we build a workforce, if you like, that pipeline. As you mentioned, Nicole, of interpreters over time and through parliament as an exemplar, moving down that pathway to try and bring that pipeline to the fore and perhaps focus some resources on development of that expertise in the wider community. I'd be interested in your experience specifically about how you've addressed that issue and any initiatives you might be thinking about in that area as to improving your access to Ausland interpreters more generally. Who'd like to go first, Nicole?
Yes, I think this issue about availability of interpreters has been developing over many years here in the ACT. Our Canberra Institute of Technology stopped offering the Ausland course, which was, you know, a very accessible, quite cheap course. And now a sort of private provider come in to provide that course. It's quite expensive for the average person. And then you've got to, if you're very interested, go to Sydney or Melbourne to do an interpreting course. We don't have one here in... Just because of the numbers. And then sometimes when students go to Sydney for that interpreting course, of course, they don't actually come back. They say, you know, whether... They say, you know, we've done their uni course and made some other connections. So it is a complex issue, but I'm not, and I feel if there are uh, more, um, stable employment opportunities and more guaranteed income, then that would encourage more people to think about interpreting as a career and indeed move to come back to the ACT, uh, completed an interpreting course.
Thanks, Nicole. Um, what about the, uh, New Zealand experience, David?
Yeah, uh, thanks, Mr. President. Uh, it has been an issue for a number of years. I think we've been providing sign language interpretation of the kind I mentioned for about ten years. Um, and we did run into that same workplace, uh, workforce problem. One of the things we've been considering doing is having an in-house interpreting unit. We do it at the moment for, uh, Maori language, so that members can speak Maori in the House and it gets interpreted into English. Um, so we do have some experience of running an in-house interpretation service. Um, that's also quite difficult to staff, but, uh, hasn't been as difficult. Um, and, um, it's fair to say at the, um, at the moment, that would, that's an easier workforce to staff. Um, what that really is dependent on is some funding. We currently couldn't afford to operate something like that, but it does seem to me like it's probably the best way ahead. Um, and that would grow the total number of sign language interpreters available without taking any away from the deaf community, uh, you know, for essential services. So that's, I suppose that's my idea, but it's not happening at the moment because of funding constraints.
Thanks, David. Andreas?
Thanks, President. Um, I think I concur with the, the statement about, um, providing, um, employment or work for, uh, people that are in the consult, um, in the interpreting space. Um, when we started our Auslan bulletin, we used our broadcast team here in Parliament to work with the young deaf community members. And eventually, um, because they were going into other employment, it wasn't possible for us to continue. But they recommended a very good, um, company, Auslan Consultancy Services, um, here in Victoria. And one of the reasons they did that was because they said it would also continue to support Auslan interpreters being, uh, employed because it gave them employment by us giving the video work to them. So it becomes a steady, I think, opportunities to give, um, Auslan companies, uh, work. I think is a really important part of encouraging that. Um, I think also raising, um, awareness of Auslan has been an important part of, uh, making people aware that they could have a career path in interpreting, um, Parliament sort of supporting that by doing as much as we can to provide, uh, opportunities, uh, but also to raise it. And that includes in our education programmes. One of the things that we heard from the young, um, deaf community members was that often when they were doing, uh, going through school, they were offering often having to learn sign language and they might have been missing out on civic education. Because while the other members of the class might have been doing civics, they were learning sign language. So they said some concentrated sort of effort at Parliament, reaching out to deaf community schools or deaf schools, um, to, uh, look at ways in which you can, we can also encourage, uh, um, interaction with Parliament, but also Parliament sort of showing that we are connecting with the deaf community. I think helps to raise awareness of that and shows the employment, uh, possibilities. Again, some employment programmes at Parliament, as, um, the New Zealand C, Cax mentioned, which provides opportunities for, uh, deaf community members to work at Parliament, whether it's through sign language or other. I think it's a really good way, um, to encourage, um, greater awareness and, and employment avenues.
Thanks, Andreas. And what now? Pass to Ms. Boyd.
Thank you. Um, and thank you to all of you for, um, for coming and giving us the benefit of your experience. Um, in relation to the number of interpreters available, it does seem like we have a sort of chicken and egg, um, problem here where we don't have enough interpreters, but then we don't have enough opportunities, um, for people, uh, should they become interpreters. So it would strike me that the, the sort of, I guess, one way to try and address that is to have a staged implementation approach where you say, you know, the, in the next three years, this is likely to be the, the types of, um, circumstances in which we would, um, uh, be requiring interpretation. And then after that, we would be looking to ramp up, um, giving that expectation for people that there is that opportunity for them once they get in. Um, so to sort of test that hypothesis, I guess, I'm interested, um, perhaps I could, uh, I could start with you, David. Um, when you first introduced, uh, interpretation and noting what you've said about the constraints on capacity going forward and not being able to expand it, did you at least see a positive impact of what you were doing on the numbers of people who wanted to be interpreters at that time, even if it wasn't enough? Is there any evidence you can show us that including it in Parliament helped to increase that pool of interpreters?
Um, from the, in, from the New Zealand perspective, not really. I, I don't think I could make that connection because the, uh, we, we use a, um, a company which provides interpreting services. Um, and so because we don't deal directly with the individual interpreters, but with the company who provides us the interpreters, we really don't know if it, if it changed the level of interest in that sort of work.
Hmm.
I think if we were to, um, implement it, we would be, um, looking at a, a full-time service. So we could, you know, guarantee people would have work as, as much work as they could do. Um, and it would probably be a matter of picking which proceeding each, each day is interpreted. Um, because I understand it's a, a, a pretty, uh, physically intensive and, and, uh, job that requires a lot of concentration as well. And so you'd need a reasonable pool of people to, if you were to cover all of the sittings of the House. The idea was to start with question time and then probably build it from there.
Thank you. Um, and Andres, from a Victorian perspective, I know that, well, I, my understanding is that the Premier, for instance, has a, a standard practice of including interpretation, um, in, in all com, uh, press conferences. Have you seen any of what you've been doing, um, as helping to increase that available pool of interpreters?
Um, we haven't really had an issue with availability. Um, I suppose because we, um, one thing that we've really made sure of is to plan our events where we've needed interpreters quite a, a way ahead. Um, so it hasn't, because we've got a co, a few companies that we can use here in Victoria. Um, we've been able to, through good planning, I suppose, and, and making sure of quite a lot of advance notice. Um, another strategy, I suppose, has been to look at, um, where demand might be quite high during, um, weekdays. Um, we also hold events over weekends, so that, so Facebook Live events over weekends where maybe the, the demand from, let's say, other public service areas or government departments might not be as high. Um, also what we found is helpful to them, and it really came up during the pandemic, was that, um, rather than calling the interpreters onsite, letting them do online from, um, interpreting from online. So a broadcast, uh, unit has been able to work with them for events where the, um, interpreters can actually be, um, at a different location. And so they don't actually have to spend much time travelling in, which can also be a, a cost, particularly here in Melbourne, if you have to travel half an hour or, you know, or an hour to get to the venue to do the interpreting. Um, but doing it online has sort of meant that we can, um, limit the time that we actually need, uh, the interpreters. Um, so, but we haven't, as I said, because of the, um, uh, the arrangements that we've put in place to plan well ahead, we haven't had such an issue with, um, not availability.
Thank you. Um, Nicole, did you want to comment on that from an ACT perspective then?
I, I know during emergencies, you know, bushfires, et cetera, et cetera, our interpreters here were really, really under the pump at every media conference, et cetera. Very exhausting for them, uh, because of their very small pool of interpreters. And on an average parliamentary day, you would need a minimum, I think, of three interpreters available for that day, possibly more. So, you know, it does become quite an expensive exercise. But I think that is where the WANDR technology that we have more at our disposal comes in. They don't necessarily have to be onsite, for example.
Hmm.
Um, which for the ACT, you meant to be onsite. Sometimes you had to bring people in, bring interpreters in from interstate. Um, but now I think we have other options. So it's, um, pretty complicated. In some ways you might think, oh, with the federal parliament here, we could share some resources. But of course, we often sit on the same days as the federal parliament, so that may not really help.
Yep. Um, and, and, um, David, again, from a New Zealand perspective, I, I think it was you that said that they, um, that during that, um, Sign Language Week, there is, uh, interpretation of question time. How does that work? Do you have multiple interpreters? How, how do you capture the entire, I guess, proceedings? Or is your parliament just more orderly than ours?
No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that. Um, we, we do have, uh, se- several interpreters onsite, but one working at a time who signs the question and the answer. Um, and any interjections. Generally, presiding offices have required, um, silence during the asking of a question and questions have to be very short. Uh, they're usually, you know, fifteen or twenty seconds. There can't be a speech. And so that can be interpreted then followed by the answer and they would just ignore any interjections. Um, that seems to work out okay. But, yeah, we, we do need to have multiple interpreters because they, they can't, you know, keep, keep it up for very long before they need a break.
Yep.
I'll just, just add to some, a point that was made about virtual interpreting as well. It is something we're doing with the Maori language interpretation and we brought that in during COVID because it was, all of our interpreters live in other cities other than Wellington. It was difficult to get them here. And so that, that worked okay there. Um, we've been thinking about that for sign language as well. A, a little bit more complex only because obviously people have to be able to see the sign language interpreter, whereas they only have to be able to hear the, um, uh, the Maori interpreter, um, because they're interpreting verbally. Uh, but it is something we're thinking about as well, whether that would be a time saver and perhaps make people more available because we'd only need them for an hour or so.
Um, and a final question before I hand back to my colleagues. Um, uh, I think it's the, yes, it was, it was in the ACT submission. Um, talking about the challenge of, of ensuring that the camera angle, uh, captures both the speaker and the interpreter. Um, can you tell us a bit more about that challenge? And again, if, if there's one interpreter and you've got multiple people in the chamber, how you ensure that you could be having the interpreter as well as the person speaking in the shot?
I'm happy to answer, Tom, unless you'd like to.
Uh, over to Ms., Ms. Lourdes, yes.
So, um, the person requesting the interpreter lets the Office of Legislative Assembly, you know, the Clerk's office, know. And the person requesting the interpreter, for example, myself, books the interpreter. And then, you know, hands side have to be advised and for the camera angle, um, all of those arrangements made so that they pan out slightly, so that the speaker and the Auslan interpreter is visible on the camera. Uh, when it comes to another speaker who may be responding, that we have just a pause while the interpreter walks over to the other speaker. So we could, you know, have a, a bit of a slowed down, not particularly slowed down, but slow, slightly slowed down experience. And as, um, we've already heard, you know, interjections just pretty much get ignored. You can't interpret two people speaking at once. It's very difficult.
Hmm. Thank you.
Might just pass to Mr. Badeke.
Thanks. Thank you, President. Um, look, I suppose I'm interested in, um, the different levels of provision of interpretation. So I wasn't paying perhaps as much attention as I should have. So none of the jurisdictions, ACT, Victoria or New Zealand have, provide permanent interpretation for all parliamentary proceedings. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, given that you're a bit more advanced, well, a lot more advanced than we are here, um, I wonder if you've come to the view, in the context that some of the evidence we've heard earlier, which was that it might be a good model for parliaments, in other words, government, to lead the way. Because in, in essence, what's happening here is you've got a form of market failure. You've got a minority group who is being under-provisioned because no one's prepared to step in and, and put the necessary investment into creating the supply and the infrastructure for these people to have equal access. Um, so I wonder if this full-time model of Parliament employing people to do this and creating, if you like, the cutting edge of what, um, in our case, Auslan would be. And then that providing a feed-in for the rest of the market. Is there any plans from any of your jurisdictions to eventually transition to that more permanent state? I guess is my question.
Why don't we start with the ACT?
Tom, do you wish to respond?
Um, look, I will, but feel free to cut in. Um, uh, so I, I, I think from the ACT's perspective, we haven't considered that, that option yet, but it's not to say that we wouldn't. And Ms. Lourdes is a member of the Standing Committee on Administration Procedure. So that, uh, is comprised of the speaker and the three whips, ob, obviously. And that advises the speaker on members' entitlements and facilities. And they, in turn, advise the speaker on what, what to, what to put in the budget submission. And so it would be up, I guess, to that committee to decide whether it was a priority to, to go down this path that you have mentioned. And then, then it would be a, a matter for Budget Cabinet, uh, I guess. So at this stage, we, we've, as you can see, we've pretty much dipped our toe in this. You can see from our submission that we've only, we haven't gone down as far as the New Zealand example. We've, we've covered some debates. But as Ms. Lourdes indicated, the, the deaf community want to know everything that goes on in the, in the assembly. And, and so, yes, ideally, that would, that would be a good position, but it would be the subject of a budget submission, a successful budget government. Go, Ms. Lourdes.
So I was just going to add that, um, we've recently begun on the Education and Community Inclusion Committee, an inquiry into access to services and information in Auslan in the ACT. Um, we haven't started public hearings yet, so I'm unable to talk too much more about it. But I imagine these types of issues may well be broached during the parliamentary inquiry as well.
Thanks, Nicole. What about, uh, New Zealand, David?
Yeah, I, I think it's a similar situation. We, I, I would like to, and I think the only solution would be to have a unit of our own interpreters, um, employed, uh, permanently. Uh, whether that's full-time or not, we, we could, you know, work out with them and po, possible other work opportunities for them. In order to have a, a team that covered all proceedings, uh, because we sit from two, two P M. to ten P M. Um, and on two days and two till five the other, um, it would need to be quite a large team. And I, I suspect what we'd start with, if we could get the people and, and get this going, um, would be covering some of the most significant proceedings each day, probably starting with question time and build up from there. Uh, but, uh, as with ACT, there would need to be a successful budget bid. Uh, we, we can't afford to provide it at the moment.
And lastly, Victoria. Andreas?
Um, it is something that is, uh, under discussion by a hands side unit. Um, I'm not ac, uh, aware of exactly, um, the, the discussions, but it is something that, uh, the hands side team is, is discussing as to how that might be possible in the future. Um, so as I mentioned, we are planning to look at that for the opening of the sixtieth Parliament. And so that would be a sort of, uh, uh, an example of how it might work in the future. Um, one thing I would say though, that, um, it, I, I suppose, um, it shouldn't be a constraint for parliaments to look at perhaps producing more curated content, uh, based on the proceedings. Um, using either their broadcast units or others to, um, produce more newsworthy information for the deaf community. So to give ho, summaries of if we can do the full broadcast and if we can't do the full proceedings of committees. I think, you know, most, um, uh, the ability to actually give access to information in a curated way. I mean, most people probably would watch Parliament, um, full-time anyway, even people who are, um, so the ability to, um, uh, you know, and a hearing might go for six hours and, you know, people aren't going to sit necessarily through a whole hearing. But giving highlights of what was discussed and, um, things like, um, summaries of committee reports, um, you know, presentation, interviews with chairs and deputies, that's something we've been working on here at the Victorian Parliament, just making more of that information, uh, accessible, um, through Auslan interpretation or direct Auslan signing. Not just, um, um, sort of someone from, uh, with Auslan's skills to actually present, um, those segments. Um, uh, I think that, that at least would go a much further way to, uh, to getting the deaf community involved.
Thank you.
I have got, unless Wes, I don't want, I'm conscious of not taking Wes's time if he wanted to.
Go over a little bit.
All right. Thank you. Just, just a quick follow-up, um, and it stems from evidence we've heard earlier and in some of the submissions in regards to the U, United Nations articles. Um, have any of your jurisdictions done a gap analysis on what you think would be the level of compliance with those requirements in terms of providing a quality of access? Um, and if so, you know, how big are the gaps?
Um, I, I guess I'll.
I guess I'll have a quick comment. I don't think we've formally done gap analysis. But quite obviously, you know, you would start with Article nine, which is about information and communication technologies, and Article twenty-nine, which is about participation in political and public life. And once again, I'm pretty sure that many of these issues will arise during our upcoming, you know, or currently underway committee inquiry about access to services and information here in the ACT.
Could just speak from the New Zealand context. We haven't done a formal gap analysis either. There's been a select committee inquiry into accessibility to Parliament, which made a number of recommendations. Some years ago now, that's been acted on. We have an accessibility reference group as well, made up of staff from my office and members of the community with lived experiences of disabilities. And so they also provide some advice and input into, you know, what the priorities should be. That's a fairly new group that's just started working this year.
In Victoria, we've established a Disability Action and Inclusion Plan that's working through four key elements, which is Parliament's built environment, Parliament's communications, Parliament's events like hearings, seminars and other events, and also Parliament's and parliamentary staff knowledge of disability. And we have a working group that is going through sort of analysis of what needs to be done, the recommendations or the actions that need to be taken, and are working with community groups to identify the gaps and address those as we go forward.
Okay, thanks. Might now just pass to Mr. Wes Fain.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to all the witnesses for appearing today. Given the time, I'll leave my concerns about Mr. Lomp's comments that somebody might not want to watch Parliament for a whole day. But putting that aside, the thing I wanted to ask is in relation to where we have the opportunity to see handsad, obviously, the record after it's recorded and perhaps correct issues that might be of a technical nature or a recording nature, given that sometimes the substance of what we speak about can be very technical in nature or very personal in nature. That probably isn't available so much in relation to a live interpretation of what it is that we're saying, given the nature of Ausland. Have you turned your minds at all to how the issue of correcting the record might be considered in this instance? Because it is a live translation. We find sometimes it's hard enough to have people that understand the political context in the handsad world, let alone the Ausland world, where we've just heard there is a limited number of translators. So I imagine that sometimes misinterpretation could occur. Has there been any consideration around addressing that?
I don't think it's been thought about specifically, so in our parliament. But in my view, the live Ausland interpreting gives deaf people the opportunity to follow what's happening at the same time as a hearing person. And there may be mistakes or things that get corrected later that a hearing person doesn't necessarily find out about either. But it's giving the deaf person the opportunity to follow at the exact same time. They don't have to go back and read a transcript later or look at a video later. They have the same rights, the access and communication rights at the same time as anyone else. And I think correcting the record would have to be addressed in the exact same way as a written correction of the record. And, you know, I think we certainly have a lot of faith in our really experienced and professional interpreters to do a fantastic job.
We've given us some thought in New Zealand. Not specifically in relation to NZSL interpretation, but for Maori language interpretation, which we've had since the eighteen sixties. But as an online service, obviously for a much shorter time than that. And speakers have ruled on that at the time and said that the interpretation at the time is not an exact translation. They've even said it would always be to a certain extent rough and ready, and that the handsad record might then vary from that. Because the purpose, as was Laura just said, is to help members understand what's being said at the time or to help viewers understand what's being said at the time. So there may be some, you know, there might be somewhat variance with handsad. I think that's true of, you know, all of our videos of proceedings now anyway. Our handsad is a reasonably light touch. We try and make it pretty much verbatim, just take out redundancies. But there will always be some variation between, you know, the live video and the handsad. So I don't think that's an insurmountable problem.
And in Victoria, I suppose we've experienced, I suppose, the difference between the video and the handsad, particularly when we do a lot of video material, and it's not necessarily even video material, it's Ausland interpreted. But when we're doing closed captioning, particularly for any news videos we do, we do notice the difference obviously between the spoken word and what's written in handsad. We often, if people ask us, we refer people onto the written handsad to confirm them. But it's something that we haven't really looked at in detail, mainly because, I suppose, our parliamentary proceedings, the chamber proceedings, aren't Ausland interpreted at the moment. Just another point, a small point I make about just on the accessibility of Ausland interpreters. What we have found sometimes is if, there was one occasion when we couldn't get an Ausland interpreter for a webinar that we were running, what we did after the webinar is we sent the video recording of the webinar to the Ausland interpreters, and they were able to overlay the Ausland interpretation. So there are other ways to work around that, going back to an earlier question, that where if you can't do everything live, you can at least send the, and even though it might be a week later, it still may, and channels like YouTube are able to use like that because you can then make it available on YouTube and say to people, look, there's an Ausland interpretive version of these proceedings or this hearing or this segment. And it can be done at a time when the Ausland interpreters are available.
Thank you.
Okay, now I just wanted to ask a final question in relation to more of a procedural matter. So the clerks will no doubt be getting excited, but that's a practical one too. And that is in relation to, I think, Nicole, you mentioned in the ACT, you amended standing order two hundred and ten to allow an Ausland interpreter on the floor of the House. Now, I know the ACT Legislative Assembly, you've got a bit more room than some of, well, particularly the Legislative Council and the Legislative Assembly here. And I know the Victorian Parliament, just similarly constrained as we are. I wondered, because I've had some evidence this morning from some of the organisations saying it's better to have the Ausland interpreter in screen next to the speaker, but there are some practical difficulties with that in our Parliament. Obviously, we can work through these issues and understand how we might come to a resolution. But I wondered, in terms of having the Ausland interpreter in another room, so to speak, or in the Parliament, or at a place where it can be streamed directly, what has been the feedback from the deaf community about that being a pragmatic solution to that issue and satisfactory for their purposes? I hope to start with you, Nicole, and just work through those things again. Or, sorry, Tom?
I think it's less procedural in nature than I thought it was going to be, Mr. President, so I might prefer to...
I'm sorry about that, Tom.
That's wrong.
Obviously, the, you know, a bit of more space in the ACT Legislative Assembly, especially at the moment. We're quite spread out with our COVID safe arrangements. But I think these will be addressed, just as the way we are with this committee hearing, where if you do have your interpreter in another room nearby, you have the little box on the screen that shows the interpreter at the same time, and I think that works very well.
And that's the system that we use in New Zealand. It's a picture-in-picture. So they go on the top right or top left, which means the interpreter always appears beside the member who's speaking. And we have a room set up for that purpose. It works pretty well. I've not had any complaints from the deaf community about it. We do get occasional complaints from other viewers who don't like it being on the screen, but we just ignore that. Got no time for that.
Fair enough. Andreas?
One thing, Mr. President, we've done is worked with our broadcast team and the Ausland interpreters to actually, rather than just have a box in the window, we actually have a split-screen approach. So the presenter appears in one screen and the Ausland interpreter on a different screen. That's been really helpful in things like seminars, because sometimes if people share their screen and put statistics or things like that in a PowerPoint, then you often find that the Ausland interpreter might block that PowerPoint. So by having a sort of, working with the broadcast team, we've been able to look at the various scenarios of what people are presenting and making sure that both the Ausland interpreter is clear, that the people presenting and also the information they're presenting through PowerPoints is clear as well. And it took us a while to get to that, but it was just when we were watching the back videos we realised that some of the information had been covered over by the broadcast, by the interpreter. So just we've worked with them to set up a model on our screen. And what we're seeing particularly is people with larger screens and wider screens, that it actually works really well. So that's one thing I'd suggest is always with the Ausland interpreters and the broadcast people to come up with a solution.
Terrific. Well, we might just leave it there. Can I thank you all? Can I thank you all for joining us today? It's been terrific to hear from you in person and understand some of the things you're doing in your parliaments. A big shout out from the clerk of the parliament here, who's still here and has been enjoying the presentation. And indeed, I just wanted to also thank our Ausland interpreters here, who have been magnificent this morning. Bettina, Kiri and Kate, thank you all for your work here this morning. And also our handsad team and our video team, who are putting it all together down in a remote location so that everybody can see what's going on in real time. It's been a very historic committee hearing, and we're very pleased to have been part of it. We're very much looking forward to putting together a report, which will build on, I trust, what's happening in each of your jurisdictions, and we're certainly looking very closely at what you're doing next. And I think together we can all move down that pathway of making our parliaments a much more accessible place for everybody in our community. So thank you once again, and we may have some questions that we'll put to you. We will do that forthwith and will certainly, if you're able to get back to us within, you know, twenty-one days or thereabouts, would be most appreciated. And look forward to no doubt catching up with you in person in the not-too-distant future as well. So thanks again.
Thank you.